All right. Good afternoon. This is our Finance and Performance Committee, our inaugural meeting. So glad to have you here. I'm Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Committee. To my left is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Eric Costello. And to his left is a member of our committee, Councilwoman Felicia Porter of the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So as you may know, the Finance and Performance Committee is responsible for matters concerning fiscal oversight throughout the year. And our goal is to help improve the council's understanding of the city's budget and also understand how agencies are performing and delivering city services and reviewing their spending throughout the year. Our goal is also to hold regular hearings on financial information, including revenue, budgets, and audits. So once again, thank you for being here today. I do see that we have representation from our city agencies. We have agency reports as well. But I would like to have folks go around, introduce themselves from our city agencies, identify your name, and also your position with those agencies and offices.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis, interim Director of the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. And I'll be here representing both the Mayor's Office as well as the Office of the City Administrator today.
Hi, Bob Sennemy, Deputy Finance Director, representing the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Teresa Cummings here on behalf of the Law Department.
Good afternoon. Dana Peterson Moore here on behalf of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, here with Tyler Schnella.
There we go.
Well, Tyler Schnella, Office of Equity and Civil Rights Legislative Liaison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan Taylor, Managing Director, Business Neighborhood Development at Baltimore Development Corporation.
And I think we've gotten most people. I see Representative from Planning who's also coming in, so Eric Holcomb, CHAP, good to see you as well, along with my deputy councilmember, George, who was feverishly on the phone. So without further ado, we can go ahead and get started. Looking at the agency reports, I do see that we have reports from Law, Finance, Planning, BDC, the City Administrator's Office, and the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. It looks like we can start with Law, and then we can go back on to the other agencies. I see there are comments in favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Law Department, as stated in the bill report, approves the resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
All right, thank you. Finance?
Sure. So just a couple of comments on this background, on this from our perspective. So it was our office in Finance that did a study on the tax credits that was released about a year and a half ago. That report, for folks that are interested, is posted on our website at bbmar.baltimorecity.gov. You know, once we had finished that report, the question was around how do we generate stakeholder input into any kind of proposals for changing the tax credit system? I know there was a time where the administration had announced their intent to convene a work group, and from discussions with the administration, they still do have the intent of convening that work group. We think that that group is best done under the auspices of the 10-year financial plan because any way that you change or, you know, reform the tax credit system, it has to fit within budget parameters and thought of in terms of the city's long-term financial picture. So we appreciate the urgency and the intent behind this bill, but we just did want to state that we would encourage the council to work with the administration in creating a workbook, a work group that has council input so that we don't have two separate work groups looking at the issue that could have different missions or ideas. So we support the intent of the legislation, but we would just encourage the council to find ways that they can provide input into the administration-led work group that we want to convene.
And thank you for that input. And I know that our colleagues will have some comments and questions on that end. Just for everyone's edification, I think it's probably, I probably skipped a step. I should have talked about this City Council Resolution 23-0414, Property Tax Credit Reform Work Group, which you just, you know, mentioned again, sort of the intent that we have in trying to review those tax credits. And I know for myself and Chair Costello, I know it's been a very important issue for us, given some of the legislation we've been working on. So I appreciate you giving some voice to that. With that, we can move on. So Planning? I see CHAP is here. Yes.
Yeah, good. It's working. We're on, know how to work it. Yeah, the Planning Department is in support of the work group, and we look forward to working with you. And please lean on us for data and information, especially in regards to neighborhood revitalization. Thank you.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. BDC is favorable on this, and we stand by our report.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Themelis with the Mayor's Office, here to represent the Office of the City Administrator. The administration appreciates the intent behind establishing the work group and has already taken some steps to further the mission. As BBMR mentioned, in August of 2022, their office released a comprehensive review of the city's current tax credit programs. In that research, BBMR found general flaws that emerged across the current tax credit program portfolio related to equity, developer benefit, buyright credits, and terms and sunset dates. Most recently, the administration convened a two-day brainstorming session in furtherance of a comprehensive 10-year financial plan for the city of Baltimore on September 14th and 15th. With a proposed publication date of spring 2024, the administration has identified four core financial challenges currently facing the city: structural budget balance, service delivery, infrastructure, investment, and tax competitiveness. Given the fact that we've already taken steps to advance this mission and have gleaned substantial information through our recent convening, in addition to the expertise housed within BBMR, a tax credit work group will be established in furtherance of the city's 10-year financial plan to ensure a clear understanding of the budget parameters and overarching goals to balance the structural budget and address tax competitiveness. So for the aforementioned reasons, the CAO supports the intent of City Council Bill 23-0414 with amendments with the proposal that the work group be led and staffed by BBMR with council oversight through an agreed-upon cadence of regularly scheduled meetings and hearings to provide updates, as we do not want to infringe upon the momentum that the 10-year strategic financial plan has. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Good afternoon.
And also, before we go on, I want to make sure we introduce a member of the committee, Councilmember Danielle McCray.
So typically, our office would not conduct a racial equity impact assessment on a resolution. However, this resolution is being used to take the action of forming a work group to study and provide recommendations for reforms to the city's property tax credit programs. We believe that taking the opportunity to assess how this may impact racial equity in the city was necessary. And as a result of our assessment, we have concluded that the formulation of a work group tasked with conducting an in-depth study and proposing reforms for the existing property tax development tax credits in Baltimore City will likely make progress towards racial equity and the allocation of tax credits throughout, through the city's tax credit programs. And I'll kick it over to our director.
So in particular, for the record, Dana Moore, in particular, we really liked the idea of a collaborative approach to addressing structurally problematic challenge for the city. It's a historically problematic challenge. And to take the collaborative approach, I think, gets us closer to where we need to be as a city. It's a laudable goal to address, you know, pretty well-established inequities. I guess the greatest concern is that there not be two work groups that would be in potentially conflict with one another, but more importantly, we would want them to certainly be not in conflict, but also worry a little bit about the duplication of staffing that would necessarily flow from having two work groups. So we think that the opportunity for even more enhanced collaboration exists if there is one work group that represents, you know, the City Council and the Office of the Mayor. We recognize that many cities have tax credit programs, and I think for as long as I've been, you know, working and living in the city of Baltimore, there've been the tax credit programs. They spur growth, and they spur investment. One of the unintended consequences, though, structurally, has been that Black and Brown communities and communities of low income in the city of Baltimore have, as a consequence, experienced or still experience increased or higher tax rates. And so there's clearly a need to look into this and dig into it and find a resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I believe we've heard from all of our city agencies' representatives. If I missed anybody, let me know. If not, I do want to go to our committee members. I think one point that I do want to make before we go to comments is that I know from our perspective, a lot of this came to force, you started looking at the potential extension of some tax credits and the fact that we kept getting some responses around that there would be this work group and think about the timing of that. And it still seems like that may not be as clear as of yet, but hopefully that happens because, again, we see some of the urgency that we're dealing with. I know, Councilman Costello, you had some questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in September of 2021, the mayor announced a tax credit review group. Is that group still on the table, or are we talking about now something different?
Thank you for the question. So the work group that was announced in 2021, what we're discussing now as a part of being folded into the 10-year strategic financial plan would be a version of that. It wouldn't have the exact membership as outlined in that 2021 announcement. Due to the fact that as we looked into infrastructure needs across the city and just the budgetary outlook, we realized it was a much larger planning process that was going to need to be undertaken. And so we are trying to be comprehensive and holistic in our approach to addressing not only property tax credits, but budget forecasting over the next decade.
So that was September of '21. It's now September of 2023, two years later. When do we anticipate this task force that you all envisioned, separate from the chairman's vision, being convening?
Yeah, so we just had the two-day convening on September 14th and 15th for the initial conversation around the 10-year strategic financial plan. As the City Administrator's Office included in its bill report, in the spring of 2024, that 10-year outlook will be completed, which means that the tax credit work group work will be completed before that time as well. And I also want to mention that in between that September 2021 date and today, BBMR had released its comprehensive report as well. So there is not, it's not that there is no work that's been done in intermediate time, but as far as the timeframe for when that work group will complete its work, it will be by the spring of 2024.
So I appreciate that response, but that doesn't answer the question. The specific question was, when will the group be convened? And if the answer is before the spring of 2024, is that what the answer is?
It will be well before the spring of 2024 in order for them to have concluded their work. It will be in the next phase of our planning process for the 10-year plan over the coming weeks. And so additional information concerning the first convening of that work group will come out at that time.
Okay, I participated in that entire two-day session, and I will just say that maybe a third or a half of one one-hour breakout session was dedicated to this specific topic. And the scope of what was discussed during that was expansive beyond even the four cornerstones or whatever we're calling them of the 10-year effort. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Costello. One question I do have for you. You just mentioned that, I was going to ask about that 14th and 15th. Were there any takeaways that you had from that convening? And then I did want to go into BBMR in terms of what was gleaned from their report.
The only takeaway is recurring that when the Department of Finance and BBMR calculates the estimated cost of tax credits, it is a very linear estimation. Specifically, you talk about what the lost real property tax revenue is. You don't ever talk about income tax or sales tax or any other taxes that come in as a result of new development. So it makes it very challenging to understand what the real economic impact of these tax credits are when the information is presented as just, here's the amount of money we would be getting in the general fund if it was not for these as matter-of-right tax credits.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, that's the, that's the purpose of convening a work group that has other stakeholders, including developers there, to help to understand those other factors. You know, when we look at those programs, you know, like I'll use income tax as an example. If somebody's moving from one spot in the city to another, there's no incremental income tax revenue. If somebody's moving in from outside, there's incremental tax revenue. So those are the things that I think we want to fine-tune with this group, is to figure out which of these programs are working. I have a perspective on which ones are working and which ones I don't think are working. And we have a methodology that we use that, you know, we put it all out there for folks to see. I've heard different perspectives on these items, and that's why we want to have the stakeholder input into this, into this work group, so that we design a package that does, you know, create the incentives that are needed to create additional revenue without oversubsidizing.
One question. Is there anything in this comprehensive review that we should be taking away? I mean, I have it right in front of me, but is there any takeaways that you would point to in terms of what we should be thinking about, in terms of this work group and others?
Yeah, I mean, you mean from the original report in terms of conclusions that were drawn, or is that what you're referring to from the BBMR study that was put out there? Yeah, and we mentioned some of this in the, in our report, but I can give you my take on it because I did write a lot of the report. So, you know, there's four areas. I mean, one was touched on was equity. Because our tax credits are kind of offered mostly equally throughout the city with a few exceptions, a lot of the credits tend to be used in the areas that are stronger and wealthier in some cases, and that's natural. That's how development works. They're looking for the highest return. But that can, you know, exacerbate some of the issues we've seen with some of those equity issues. The second thing is, some of the credits, because they get capitalized into the resale of a property or a commercial development, the developer benefits from them more directly than a homeowner does. Or, and so I think that's an area that we highlighted in the report to show how sometimes it drives up the price of a home to the advantage of the developer. Again, they're not doing anything wrong, but those programs, you know, benefit the development more directly than the homeowner in some cases. The third item that we said was that the credits are, we call them buyright credits, and that means that if you qualify for one of our tax credits, you get it. You don't have to go through any kind of strict BUT4 test to make sure that the subsidy is what is absolutely needed to trigger the development. Now, we have no desire to do a BUT4 test on hundreds and hundreds of tax credit applications every year. However, when you have a buyright system, what I would call it, you have a large risk of oversubsidizing projects that might have been able to live with a smaller subsidy. And we've pointed out some places in our report where we think that that is, that is happening. And then the last thing is just the terms and the sunset dates. They're dramatically different across the portfolio. You have some credits where we give a 100% abatement for 10 years. We have other ones where we give a 50% abatement in the first year, and it phases down to only 10 in year five. And so it's not really not clear, when we looked at the programs and studied them, it wasn't really clear why there was that difference in programs. And the sunset dates also different, also differ, and so that there's, they're kind of looked at piecemeal rather than kind of, they should all probably be sunsetting at the same time. So we can study them collectively and then kind of reauthorize for a two- or three- or five-year period or whatever we desire. So that's what we found. I want to clarify something from my perspective because I've heard a lot of feedback of like, oh, your report says you don't like tax credits. That's not true. Our proposal is that if you could even squeeze $1 out of every six in reform, that you could redirect those savings to other things, like we talked about in the 10-year plan, infrastructure investment, tax reduction, all these other things that we want to do that we can't because we can't afford them. And, you know, to Councilman Costello's point, we want to be sensitive to the idea that we don't want to pull something back if it's incenting the right kind of development, but we also have an obligation to look and make sure we're not oversubsidizing that could have lived on its own or could have lived with a smaller subsidy because that is a cost impact to the city as well.
I see we've been joined by Councilmember Ramos, and I know, you are very welcome. And I know Councilmember Porter has a question.
Yeah, so Director Sennemy, what you just described is really, I think, the genesis and kind of the foundation of having that additional conversation about these tax credits. And my brain, just organizing it, you really kind of developed a matrix style with benchmarks of what we should be looking at, what we should be talking about during this quote-unquote work group, per se. If it's during the 10-year, if it's during the 10-year process period, then we need to get that scheduled soon enough to kind of see what that conversation looks like. This could be a venue for that or it cannot. But I think that what you just described is really what we need to be focused on as far as like really deep diving into our tax credits, whether they're worth it or not, whether they're positive or negative, and also whether they're positive or negative throughout the entire city from that equity approach. And so have there been any, Nina, have there been any conversations of what types of benchmarks we're going to be focused on? Director Sennemy just mentioned like six of them, if I thought, I mean, if I counted correctly.
So I can tell you what I have in mind, what I had in mind originally when we talked about this. So the report that we did, it lays out a lot of data. There's maps of where the credits are used. There's a description of what the credit is for, you know, what the subsidy is, how many we've granted over time, how that has changed. And so you kind of have like a piece by piece for all of the large credits. How are they working? Who is it benefiting? So a lot of it is just kind of data and understanding. And, you know, some of that has helped correct some misperceptions. Like, I'll give you an example. The homestead tax credit, the one that provides a cap, a 4% cap on any individual taxpayer's taxes in a given year, that is often perceived as being something that benefits kind of like the grandmom who's lived in her house for 40 years, and it prevents her prices from, her taxes from going up to a point that they can't afford them anymore. Actually, if you look at the heat map, a lot of that credit is actually benefiting Canton, you know, Federal Hill, because those are places that have seen very rapid appreciation in prices where they run against the 4% cap. So there's individual, there's each chapter in that report shows kind of some of the data. And then I think what we have to do is sitting down with all of the stakeholders to figure out, okay, now that we understand where these are being used, who they're benefiting, how many applications we've seen, how many we've granted, then we can start thinking collectively about, are there things that we want to do to reform that? Do we want to pull back on some of the credits we have? Are there's other that we want to expand? Or are there brand-new ones that we want to put out there that we're not even targeting now that could do more, more good? So the idea of the work group would be, you've got to kind of go through the findings of the report just to get everybody on the same page with the, with the data and the findings. And then you're going to have a lot of different opinions, right? You're going to have stakeholder input there. And collectively, by understanding the development side of the picture, as well as how the city views them, you know, try to develop a program collectively together where we're getting the most, the biggest bang for the buck, I would say, for the incentives that we're providing.
And I think, you know, just from a stakeholder engagement perspective, and Nina, this is more towards the, just the formation of the 40 leaders that were, you know, suggested to kind of help with this. I think what we're getting into is a larger stakeholder engagement as opposed to more of a specific stakeholder engagement. So something like tax, you know, tax credit reform to something geared towards more specific stakeholder engagement that may or may not be fully, fully talked about or discussed during those types of like two-day periods, because we're going from session to session to session. And so I wonder if there's an opportunity that we can convene a smaller, kind of more specific stakeholder engagement, because this, this area of tax credit reform is something that is not only going to benefit the communities that you mentioned, but the communities that you mentioned, like Canton and Federal Hill, but it's going, it should be benefiting the entire city. And I don't know if the larger two-day kind of forum that we are already kind of executing is going to be, is going to really address that.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. So that is exactly the intent of the administration, is that the two-day initial convening was to set the foundation and provide to all members who are participating in that one-time meeting, an opportunity to provide feedback on the overarching plan and to gain an understanding of the process that we're going to be undertaking. The tax credit work group will be a subset of individuals. That will not include the entirety of the 40 members. We will be soliciting feedback and input from many different areas and many different sectors. And we welcome the inclusion of, you know, elected officials, including council members, to provide feedback so that we can make sure that we're looking at the issue from a holistic perspective and that we're not getting tunnel vision in any specific area. And then I think Bob had a few more comments.
Councilmember Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bob, what was the tax credit that you referred to when you were talking about Canton and Federal Hill?
That was, it's the homestead tax credit. So that's the one that caps.
I just didn't hear what the credit was.
Yeah, it's the homestead tax credit. And I, I'm just using that as an example of one where when we, when even I saw the results of that, my perception of what I thought it was doing changed a little bit when I actually saw the maps and the data and how it plays out. So I think even just, again, when we convene the group, even just kind of showing, going through all those different credits, how they're used, what the intent was for, is something that would be beneficial for.
Equity and Civil Rights, please.
Yes, yes, Dana Moore again. One of the things I just want to lift up from our report is, as we're talking about the composition of the work group, we think it would be really important and beneficial to include constituents that are residing in the communities that are not currently benefiting from the tax credits.
I thank you for that. It reminds me of a question I was going to, I was going to raise because in our recent conversations, I know I've been very interested in the historic preservation tax credit, CHAP's tax credit. And I know our goal was to really expand definition of historic, and I know there was some, some pushback as relates to that. From CHAP, I'm curious because I know for some time you guys have been collecting data around the utilization of that credit. Can you talk a little bit about some of the analysis that you guys have done? Maybe that'd be helpful in terms of equity point of view?
Sure. We have done in-house equity studies that shows sort of where the credit is equitable, where the credit is not equitable, what are those characteristics, how they help people in lower-distress communities, how they help people in middle neighborhoods. We also see that the credit is absolutely essential for rehabbing historic homes in, in our more distressed communities that are designated as National Historic Districts. Without the credit, we would not be seeing any type of rehabilitation in Connington Square, the Oliver neighborhood, Harlem Park, all of those neighborhoods that are more distressed than, than other communities use the credit. They have to use the credit to make the numbers work. So that's, that's, that's something that we have seen. We've also seen, I don't know, I'm getting old, so. And I remember the years in the mid-'90s, early-'90s, when Canton was not a place that you wanted to move to. And the, it was, it's not like it is today. And even in South Baltimore, too, we didn't know which way South Baltimore was going. And it was because of, or partly because of this, the CHAP credit, that we see those communities as, as they are now. And there's positives to that, and there's also negatives to that in many ways. And those are the things that I really look forward to talking with everybody about. Let's get the data. Let's get the information. Let's have a good conversation so we could really create, it doesn't have to be the CHAP credit, but let's create a credit that actually moves the city forward in terms of renovation, rehabilitation. And we can only do it house by house. That's the only way we're going to turn the city around. Thank you.
No, thank you. And that's helpful, just thinking about the last two comments in terms of who's not getting a chance to use the credit, who's getting to use the credit. And I think any work group should have a mix of the two. I know Councilmember McCray has a, has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From the report that you guys put out in August of 2022, have, have you moved on any of the recommendations that were outlined within the report?
So we have not, but we've started working towards, towards one. And actually, you know, Eric, one of our comments in the report was the CHAP tax credit is, it is 100% subsidy for 10 years. That's, that's, means you pay no taxes on the improvements over a 10-year period. So that was one that we looked at and said, well, is, do you need 100% credit to make that work happen? Could it be 80 or 50? Or could we keep the 100% credit in certain neighborhoods but start to phase it out for ones that have already benefited from the program? So we started talking about ways that we would reform one of those credits individually, kind of per the recommendations or the findings in the report. But again, the idea here is that we want to do it in a holistic way so that we're looking at it within budget constraints as well. So we have started acting on that. There was also, before the release of the report, there was a proposal to make changes to the city's, the Brownfield tax credit program, and that one was later pulled. That was, I guess, two to three years ago. So, you know, based on some of the finds in the report, we did try to take some action to make some of the changes, but the direction we got was we want to pull all stakeholders together, you know, especially on the developer side, to be fair to the developers, like, they're the ones that actually have to run the numbers and make the project work, right? So you have to kind of see, and I've never seen, I've never sat with one and actually looked at the numbers because they would be crazy to share those numbers with us individually, right? Like, if it's benefiting them, they're not going to say that necessarily. So when we get the work group, we're going to have to have some level of mutual trust to say, here's what we see on our side. What do you see on your side when you run the numbers on these projects? And see if we can find ways where, again, where credits that might be a little bit too generous today could be redirected to places where we actually really need the money and the funding to go would be my hope is how this would, would play out. So does that answer your, your question?
Yeah, it answers my question because it's, it's, the answer is no. But you guys are working, but you guys are working towards some things. I guess I would say, can you just explain, and you know, I came a little late, but can you just explain, if you've already mentioned it, the overlap that this particular work group may have with the one that was announced in 2021?
Yeah, our, our feedback in Finance and City Administrator's Office feedback was just, we wouldn't want to have like two- we wouldn't want to have like two separate ones conflicting. We do have the intent of convening something soon, and so we just wouldn't want to have two.
But would there be any, like, right now, can you speak of any specific items that may, because that one, like, it's not moving. So are there any specific items that you can point to that may be overlap? There may be some overlap?
Well, I think, yeah, the City Administrator's response had said in terms of the timeline of when we expect to convene. So we understand that it's been, you know, there was an announcement made a long time ago, but the intent is to get this one moving very quickly.
Okay, so I guess my thing is something, and it's just a comment, I'm as quick as I can. I've been vocal in the past about this, but if we don't, and you guys know this, if we don't make any changes, someone else is going to make the changes for us, which is why I believe that this is, why this was put forward, because the 2021 workgroup is not moving at the speed of urgency that it, that is needed to get things done. And that's why I'm fully supportive of this workgroup, to see if maybe it can get it done a little bit quicker. But again, I just want to reiterate that, whether it's through charter amendment or whether it's through city council legislation, if the administration is putting plans forward and they're not moving on these plans or these different studies that keep coming and keep coming out, someone else is going to do it for us, and that's not what we want to happen. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember McCray. Again, you've spoken the word that we're all feeling, which is urgency. So thank you for bringing that to the floor once again. Councilmember Ramos, then Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Themelis or Mr. Sennema, and this could have been asked earlier, I apologize for being late, and if it was asked, I will look at the recording. But how do you envision the working group under the 10-year plan group looking? Is it that same group? Is it a different group? I want to just kind of figure out between what Mr. Chair has suggested here and what you're suggesting, what's the difference between the two? And again, if this was asked earlier, I'm happy to defer.
Thank you, Councilmember. We touched upon this, but I'm glad to kind of go over it or add a little bit of additional detail. So the workgroup, that would be a subgroup of the 10-year strategic financial planning group, but would not be the entirety of the group. We would also want to work with council members as a part of that workgroup. And then rather than having it be this large 40-member group, we would engage with key stakeholders on an individual basis in order to receive their feedback and input so that we can have a more comprehensive approach to understanding where the existing tax credits may benefit or detriment different stakeholder groups throughout the city, whether there are separate or additional tax credits that should be considered. So that is kind of the basis of what the workgroup will do, and we'll just engage with individual parties as deemed necessary with the results of that tax credit workgroup being a part of the 10-year strategic financial plan rollout in the spring of 2024. And as far as not wanting to have two duplicative groups working on the same thing at the same time, a part of it is staff capacity, as this workgroup would require membership and participation from staff from the administration, as well as making sure that the lens through which we're reviewing all of these tax credits is done within the larger scope of the picture and our budget outlook and all the things that we need to look forward to changing and improving across the city.
Thank you. I guess I want to echo the frustration that I've been hearing from the rest of the committee as well. I think when, I was excited when the finance report came out a couple of years ago because we really needed that as a jumpstart. And so I will also take responsibility because, you know, this is a big topic of mine, and I could have just started introducing stuff. But I think it was important to have a workgroup, and we thought that we were going to move forward with it. So I appreciate Mr. Chair putting this, putting this in. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter.
Thank you. Ms. Themelis, if it's possible, as a committee request, based on the 10-year, the 10-year financial plan, really kind of benchmarking what each particular item within that 10-year plan would do, you know, the larger chunks of that plan, and then proposing benchmarks within each of those chunks, and then a respective timeline of when each of those themes will meet and who the audience is. I think that's really, you know, if you're connecting both of these groups and making sure that there's no duplication, having that transparency of how this particular workgroup translates to the 10-year financial plan and also the, you know, the audience, that will really create a lot of dialogue within this committee. But it'll also demonstrate to the committee that there is some sort of good faith with connecting those two working groups.
No, I really like that idea. Could you summarize that again? Because I think this is really the kind of the purpose of what we're trying to do, give them all the conversation, just what you said.
Sure, sure. So what I'm trying to do is create a matrix, matrix here for the committee as a committee request, and it will be four columns. You'll have four themes that are demonstrated throughout the 10-year financial plan where the administration kind of wants the 10-year financial plan will go to include the tax, tax credit working group. And then another column having that benchmarks of each of those respective themes, what the purpose of those respective smaller workgroups are, since there will be specific stakeholder engagement. And then a date. You mentioned all of these themes or groups will meet before early 2024, having a respective date, and then the target audience with each of those specific workgroups so that we can see how these two align.
Yeah, I can, I can try to respond to that in terms of what we're thinking. And, you know, after the, you know, kind of the debrief from last Thursday and Friday, you know, we were talking through kind of how we want to push this forward going forward. And so what, what we were thinking is, you heard us talk about four cornerstones, there's structural budget balance, infrastructure investment, tax competitiveness, and core service delivery. So the idea would be we would have some subcommittee under each of those. We see that the tax credit one is falling, is almost like a subset of the tax competitiveness one itself. And so our thinking might be that we might have two there or ones that meet together because the tax credits is such a very, it's such a specific issue, and there's so much detail to it that it kind of merits its own group. But the idea would be you have subcommittees under these cornerstones. That would include internal folks, it would include some external folks. By internal, I mean city agency folks to get feedback. And then again, the goal here is we've got to get structurally balanced, we want to reduce our taxes, right? We want to invest more in infrastructure, and we want to improve our core services. And all those things take money or savings or new revenue. And so, you know, getting the feedback from each of those kind of subcommittees helps us to kind of develop a bigger idea of like, what do we have to do to kind of make improvement in those areas?
Yeah.
And you heard some of the ideas, you know, last week, you heard some of the bigger ideas about, hey, we could generate X million numbers of dollars by doing this, or we could save money on changing benefit structure in some ways. You've heard a little bit of those ideas, but here would be to flesh it out again among all the internal and external stakeholders, and then we would come back and say, here is our, here's our plan, basically.
And Director Sennema, you hit exactly the nail on the head. So I'm assuming that a follow-up from that two-day meeting would be these, would be this respective matrix. So having that as a committee request to kind of continue to move this along, but also to prevent duplicative work between what was in 2022 and what we just went through over these past two days, I think that would be best. And when do you think you can furnish that, Nina?
So I'm going to speak with the City Administrator. She is happy to commit to providing a timeline. I think initially, within the next two weeks, we can have an initial structure to you as far as what we're understanding the request to be, and we can ensure that it's comprehensive and a rough timeline structure. And then following that feedback that we received from yourself and the rest of the committee, we can further, provide further detail as to the structure of what the timeline will be and the engagement that we'll be looking to have take place between.
Okay, and so in my brain, that's two weeks for us to get some type of timeline, and then subsequently, two weeks after that, which will be a month after this committee date to have that fleshed-out matrix. So at that time, it would be about a month from that two-day retreat that we just went through, so about a month?
Yes.
And so you are able to talk to the City Administrator, but I'm just thinking of a timeline, so two weeks and then a month. All right.
Are there any more questions from members of the committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Councilmember Ramos, please.
Thank you. I was happy to be a part of the 10-year plan. I could only attend the one day and not the second day. One thing that struck me, however, was that, you know, the City Administrator actually added a fifth cornerstone. She did. And it was housing and addressing vacant properties. And so I don't, I know that they weren't the main ones, but she did add it. And so I don't know where that all fits in. I think it does fit in with some of the, within one, each of these, because it's all integrated, and if that's the intent, then that's fine. But I just want to make sure we're still moving in the direction, because I think, at least in our groups, it was extremely clear that we can't go anywhere and raise revenue anywhere if we're not addressing that issue. Thanks.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we see that as falling under the infrastructure investment because it's such a huge part of that. But there's other infrastructure investment, obviously, besides that. So that's where we see that, that's kind of where we see that falling. And we'll talk to the City Administrator about how we break that out. But that was in the original presentation, we kind of saw that as falling under, how do we generate more money for vacant investment? But there's other things, you know, city facilities, city buildings, roads, bridges, all those other things that we've got to be mindful of, too.
Thanks.
Are there any additional comments or questions from members of the committee? And are there any additional comments from any of our agencies or the administration? I'll just say, you know, just in terms of wrapping some things up, I know we've talked about urgency a few times today. I know there have been some very specific requests from the administration, which I think would be helpful in terms of our next steps as a committee. From our perspective, it seems like it makes the most sense to recess as we wait for additional information from the administration. It seems like that may be forthcoming around mid-October. Is that about right? Or?
Yeah, you'll have an initial response from us in two weeks' time, and then a more full timeline and outline for the process for the workgroup within one month, so about mid-October.
All right, well, if there are no additional comments or questions, the committee will stand in recess. It looks like no one also signed up to testify. So if anyone signed up to testify, speak now or forever hold your peace. I don't see anyone. So with that, the committee will stand adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now in recess.